Okay, very good. Good evening. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of January ninth, 2018. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all.
How you doing?
Very much. Happy New Year to everyone. Um, you will notice that there's a little change up here. We would like to congratulate our newest member Christine Kane on your election.
Thank you.
And we look forward to working with you over the course of the next four years.
Thanks.
And thanks again to Jim Ross for his service to this town. It's very much appreciated and we see the results of it as we move forward. Um, and congratulations to Sue McCann, who we have again for four more years as our town clerk. Sue, thank you again.
An honor.
Yeah. So, alright, um, we are going to start the meeting as we do every first meeting of the month with the supervisor's report. And this is for the period from twelve one to twelve thirty one. And I will read for you the balances. And for the folks at home, Steve. We began the month with an opening balance of four million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars, seventy-five cents. We had receipts of one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy cents, with dispersments of one million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-four, forty-four cents. For a remaining balance of four million, three hundred and one thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and one penny. And there are very few things to note. We did receive our second mortgage tax payment. That was a hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And another community preservation fund deposit for a period actually ending November. We get the payment in December. We just received today, I believe it was, the December amount, which was fifty thousand dollars for the month of December. So I think I mentioned to you at a previous meeting how much money we've collected and used from the community preservation fund. It now totals in the ten years we've had it, two point six million dollars. And we've done a lot of great preservation work with it and I think it's really shown how effective a tool it is. We have the bank statements. Let me see. Are there any questions about the management of the forum? If not, would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we also have a couple of budget adjustments. From our bookkeeper, Ann Conway. If you don't have any questions. I think we don't, actually. I think they're just listed in the supervisor's report. So now if we don't have budget adjustments, we'll get them for our next meeting. Alright, um, next up is the clerk's report, Sue.
Town clerk month of report for the month of December, 2017. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, one thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-six cents. Amount paid to New York State Ag and Markets for the Spade and Nuda program, fifty-four dollars. Amount remitted to New York State Department of Racing and Wagering, fifteen dollars. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation, ninety-three dollars and fifty-four cents. For total state, county, and local revenue of one thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents. Pursuing to section twenty-seven, sub-one of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, town clerk of town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office. And that's for December, 2017. I just want to alert the residents that tomorrow, tax bills will be mailed out. So by some chance, if the postman does not bring your tax bill in about a week, please contact me and we'll get you another copy of it. If you receive a tax bill and it's supposed to go to a mortgage company, it is your responsibility to forward it to them. And if anybody needs any help, the taxes are due February twenty-eighth. And we had a, um, some people prepaid their taxes this year. So that was quite a whirlwind and I think we collected about three hundred and ten taxes ahead of schedule. That's it. New recycling center stickers are on sale for 2018, so. Very busy right now.
Thank you very much, Sue. We very much appreciate your accommodating the prepayments. And we thank Claire for her help as well, the county certainly for producing the roll um, a few days early so that we can make that available to residents.
Local company, SCA, got the tax roll on the computer for me and that was like a godsend, really.
Right.
So, very appreciative to that.
Very good. Thank you very much. Um, is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you very much. Um, announcements, just a couple of brief announcements. As a reminder, we have our E-Waste event at the Red Hook Recycling Center this Saturday, January thirteenth. That's from eight AM to one PM. Sarah, did you want to say some more about that event for folks?
Uh, we have an acceptable, a list of acceptable items on our website and you can also get it probably in the town clerk's office or contact one of us. Um, but it's your basic, pretty much anything with a cord um, that you plug into a wall, except things with freon are an extra charge of fifteen dollars. And the old style monitor, computer monitor and TV monitors are ten or twenty dollars depending on the size. But um, there will also be home pickup for anybody who needs it, but you have to have it out on the curb for our truck to come get it. So, um, if you want home pickup, you have to contact either the village clerk or the town clerk depending on where you live so that we know to come and find you. But like Robert said, it's eight to one and we're happy to provide it. With the help of our students who are going to be out and about for the weekend doing their Martin Luther King Junior Day of Engagement. So, that's always a big help to us putting on this event each year.
Thank you very much and I'll use the Martin Luther King as a segue to the next announcement, which is that we have the holidays, official holidays for the town in 2018. It starts with obviously New Year's Day, which has passed, but Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January fifteenth. President's Day, February nineteenth, Memorial Day, May twenty-eighth, Independence Day, July fourth, Labor Day, Columbus Day, that's September third and October eighth. Veterans Day, November twelfth, Thanksgiving, November twenty-second. Floating Holiday, which is a holiday we do around Thanksgiving and Christmas. We also do a day generally before or after Christmas, which is always December twenty-first. So we'll post all those holidays on the town's website, but just so you know, Monday, Martin Luther King Day, Town Hall will be closed in observance of that holiday. Okay, very good. Um, it's that point of the evening. Let me ask if anybody would like to make some public comments? There's somebody here. Linda, would you like to make some comments? Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Uh, I hope that the new website will be looking better than this website. In particular, I've been having trouble getting the agendas. They haven't been posted. It says supposed to be posted seventy-two hours before meeting. So if we could please do a better job at that, would be very helpful. So that I don't have to get in contact with your secretary, who seemed to be a little aggravated with me contacting her, which I did not appreciate.
Okay. Um, you referenced a requirement to have the agendas posted seventy-two hours and what requirement is that?
It's in the code.
In the code that we.
Town code.
Our agenda seventy-two hours beforehand. Okay.
And the other thing, I want to know if you're going to be getting a new committee together for St. Mark's.
We hope so. Yep, we hope so. We need somebody to lead that effort. Fortunately, we haven't had somebody yet to lead that effort, so we will keep you apprised of that. That is in discussion. We'll actually be taking committees and boards at our next meeting, really tackling that. We have just a few appointments to meet.
May I suggest you make contact with the Red Hook Historical Society? There might be some interest from some members there.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much. Um, anybody else like to make some comments? Chris Munn, our newly elected county legislator. Congratulations to you again, Chris.
Thank you and congratulations Christine and Sue on your reelection. Um, so I'm Chris Munn. I'm the new county legislator for Red Hook in Tivoli, recently elected. And I hope to come to at least one meeting a month here at Town Hall to report on anything that I think will be affecting the town and town business and to let people know what's going on at the county and also to take any input you have. I've worked with all of you at one point or another, in one capacity or another, uh, over the years and I look forward to continue doing so. Uh, so far, we've only had our organizational meeting down in Poughkeepsie and our first full board meeting will be the twenty-second. So I hope to return in between that board meeting and the next one, which is only about three weeks later, uh, to report on any relevant details. As you know, most of government work is paying the bills and keeping the lights on. Uh, so, uh, the vast majority of the actions that we take are important but are relatively run of the mill. But I'll certainly keep you apprised. So, alright, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris, for coming. We appreciate it. Alright, our first item on the agenda is our annual reorganization. I think as I alluded to, we won't really be tackling all the committees and reappointments. We haven't heard back from the chairs and the individual members who's willing to stay on. And so we'll have a better report of that going forward. There are a couple positions we do need to take care of, uh, just so that we can conduct business. Um, but we do have our draft resolution here relating to the annual reorg. And I put it up on the screen there too, Steve, for the folks at home. But, um, I would like you to review this if you would. A lot of it is, um, pro forma, but in particular, I would draw attention to the item number two in the resolution, which is the official newspapers. You know, for quite some time now, we've had two official newspapers and, um, that necessitates additional time and additional cost, not only for the taxpayers, but for applicants who come in front of, um, the boards and need to conduct a business when it's necessary to do public notices. And so we spend thousands of dollars each year to publicize and there are so many other ways now that we can get out word to folks about what is happening in town. And in particular, this new website that we will be implementing and hope to have up and running sometime around mid-year, where you can sign up. I think I've said this a few times, so I apologize for repeating myself. But you can sign up for things you're interested in receiving and you can have it automatically sent to you. So if you want to have these legal notices sent to you, um, we can accommodate that. Also, you can see them on the town's website. So I put it out there to suggest to you that, you know, it might make sense for us to pick one of these two newspapers um, as the official newspaper. And if we decide we want to publicize certain things in a second newspaper, of course, we can always do that. But we won't be bound to, to do that, um, for each and every action that we take, no matter how minor. So I put that out there, um, for discussion. Sarah, any thoughts on that?
I think it makes sense to think about it. And if we didn't, we should probably think really carefully about which newspaper to pick. Yeah, it's hard to know, I guess, how important it is to have it in too, because I'm sure some people are, you know, people are really tied to whichever one they subscribe to, I would imagine. And I'm sure there's somebody who gets the information of each one, you know, but how many people, it's hard to know. I don't know what's worth thinking about.
Okay, um, Bill, any thoughts?
Well, if we only need one newspaper and there's one principal paper in Dutchess County, the Journal, we've used all these years. I would probably recommend going with that.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Um, Christine, Harry, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'd be, I've made considerable thought for a while, actually for a while.
Okay.
It seems to me that Poughkeepsie Journal is, is the, the newspaper of record, really, in the minds of most people here.
Okay.
But one is enough, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we could, again, we can always publish something in, in the Freeman or other papers as well and other types of media. We've talked about having social media presence. Um, so we want to get the word out to everybody and make it available to everybody. But the legal requirement sometimes makes it expensive for folks.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, if we really only have to have one, then we should probably choose the one that's in Dutchess County since that's where we are.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's at least consensus. Um, shall we go ahead? Sarah?
Could I abstain?
You, you can abstain.
I so moved.
I hate the idea of, I, it's, yeah. I'm just gonna say that just as, I, I think it's probably the right move on the part of our budget. I hate the idea of taking away revenue from struggling.
Yeah.
Print media, so that's all I, and also the Kingston Freeman, I just want to put it out there, is the only paper that sends a reporter, which I think is just something to think about. But I agree that Poughkeepsie Journal is based in Dutchess, so.
If we had a newspaper named The Observer, that would add, that would as a second.
Yeah, if we could, we would, but, yeah, um, so, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think we only have had a reporter here.
I'm not saying the reporting's good or accurate or that it's even very often. I'm just saying, I'm just putting that, I just want to put that on, on record. That's, okay, let's vote.
Maybe a second. Once, once, sir. Right, huh.
Get ready to vote. Okay, just ready to vote.
Alright, so I think we've got a motion from Bill O'Neil to appoint the Poughkeepsie Journal as the official newspaper for 2018. Is there a second for that?
Harry's second.
I second.
Oh, I'm sorry. We all are moving too fast for me. Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's, that's, uh, five yes votes. Um, and the resolution, which would be number one, dated January ninth, twenty eighteen, will now be, this draft will be amended to record the Poughkeepsie Journal as the official newspaper. Are there any other changes? We're going to stick with the second Tuesday, fourth Wednesday of the month. Does that work for folks?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, very good. Well, I don't know that there's much else here that, uh, really we need to, to suggest to alter, so if not.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
They had raised the petty cash to five hundred years ago when we had a lot of malings.
Yeah.
I think they could actually reduce. Not too much stuff comes out of petty cash, not much.
Okay, do you ever get a flood of maybe something siphoning stickers in January or February?
I'm not following.
The, whatever petty cash were, you would have more petty cash for, no?
No.
Wouldn't run through there.
Note that this is a maximum.
Yeah.
To hold as petty cash.
This is a maximum that you can have in petty cash.
It's not a minimum. You don't have to hold that much in petty cash.
Oh, okay, okay. So I, okay, so I can just.
Correct. You can hold less than that.
Like two fifty or something. Okay, okay. I can give that. Okay.
Good. Alright, if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution number one, dated January ninth, twenty eighteen, relating to annual reorganization.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Yep, so, um, there are.
Now wait a minute, how much of this did we do here?
We, we did this, alright. We only did this.
Oh, okay.
We only did the resolution. Okay.
Sorry, we didn't appoint the town historian yet.
No.
No.
No, she's anxiously awaiting.
History waits for no one.
Okay, so a couple things, um, that we do, and we will go down the 2018 town appointments. But I think I mentioned that we're not going to be tackling the committees and the boards because we haven't heard from folks. But we do legally need to have a planning board chair. And because our former planning board chair is now sitting with us, we need to make an appointment. I think we've had a recommendation from the former chair. We've had a letter of interest from Sam Failan to, um, fill that spot until such time as we can perhaps train another individual, uh, to take over as planning board chair. And I wondered, uh, what you all think of that, whether or not you would be agreeable to appoint, uh, Sam Failan as the chair of the planning board this evening, so that we have somebody to sign plats.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm, I would just say I appreciate Sam's, um, somewhat detailed letter of interest and, you know, just kind of outlining his experience and his thoughts about becoming chair. And it's always appreciated when people, you know, give us their thoughts and their background when they're being considered for positions. And I think he'll be great in the role.
Okay, very good. Well, with that being said, we had, we had a, a mo, a motion, we had a second. And we, would we like to have further discussion? Christine, would you like to say something?
Uh, I'd just like to add that, um, I did, uh, recommend Sam for the position and approached him about it. And I've served with him for a number of years on, on the Red Hook Town Board and also actually on the Village of Tivoli Planning Board before that. So I think he'll do an excellent job.
Okay. Very good. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. And we will tackle all the committees and all the board appointments at our next meeting, which is January twenty-fourth. At that point, hopefully, we will have the input of the chairs of those committees and the individual members and know what's interested in staying on. If you are interested in volunteering for one of our committees or one of our boards, we will have the vacancies posted on the website tomorrow. By the time you see this, it'll be posted. And if you are interested in serving, and we'd love for you to send a letter of interest, just a quick email um, with your name and maybe a little bit about your background to our town clerk, Okay, we can move on to the other appointments. We, uh, will at least begin tonight. Um, we've done our official town depository with a resolution, our official newspaper now. And, um, we have somebody in the audience, and I hate to disappoint you guys, but this is a weird construct of New York state law. The town supervisor is the individual who appoints the town historian. Why, I have no idea. But that's the way it works. But I'm wondering if perhaps you might support, um, the nomination of Emily Major as our new town historian with a vacancy, uh, by, uh, Winty Aldridge. And we thank him for his, I don't know how many years of service in that position. So, um, as it turns out, Emily Major is here tonight. And so I thought maybe we would ask her to come forward and list all her credentials if we have. We have a list of ten history-related questions. And you must be able to answer at least eight of them correctly, to be made town historian. It's a little late in the day, okay. Um, so Emily, you want to come up and just tell us? I know you didn't think you were going to be put up there.
So I am so much closer to the door.
Yeah, you are, okay. So if you don't know Emily's background, um, maybe she'll spend a minute or two just to tell us. But Emily's very involved with historic Red Hook. And you have a major in what? What is your education?
Uh, in historic preservation.
That's a pretty good one to add.
Their master's degree, right?
It is a master's degree, yes.
It's a master's degree, okay. Very good. Anything else you want to tell us?
Uh, no, I would just welcome the opportunity to, uh, preserve and promote Red Hook history. Be as nerdy as possible and collect stories and help to strengthen community in that way.
Okay.
And it is a terrifying thought to follow, uh, Wint after his forty years in this position.
Yeah. Well, I have a collection of bow ties I no longer wear. If you would like to borrow.
That would be great. Could one of your llamas perhaps shuttle me around in a cart as well?
I'm not sure the bow ties would pair well with transport.
Oh.
Very good. So Emily, we thank you very much for this position. I'm not quite sure how long this appointment lasts, but maybe it's an annual, uh, appointment.
It's once every four years.
Sounds like it must be once every four years.
So, um.
I hope so. Is there a town email address that goes with it? And is there a badge?
Is there a badge?
Is you the one?
Great.
Suit of armor.
Great.
Suit of armor.
Should be an email address.
So, um.
If there isn't an email address, we should probably have one.
We'll, we'll create one for you, absolutely. Absolutely. Um, and, and just pay attention to the email box. Make sure you're answering, you know, we don't want to be too late with, with those emails. So, great, town historian Emily Major, an ISO move. Would you join me even though it's a town supervisor appointment? Would you join me in appointing her as town historian?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Emily, I have some good news for you. Because you have become the town historian, you can no longer be the deputy historian. But a very lovely woman named Claudine Close has offered to become the deputy town historian. And if you know Claudine, folks at home, she is the head of Historic Red Hook. The president of that organization and doing a terrific job at that, I might add. So, would you all like to join me in appointing Claudine Close as the assistant to the town historian? You already have an assistant. You've only been on the job for, what, three minutes now?
Two, three hours.
Okay. So I would make a motion to appoint Claudine Close as the assistant to the town historian. Would anybody like to join me in that?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh, all in favor? We got almost everybody. Christine, would you like to join? Oh, you did, okay, I'm sorry. It's my bad, ear on that side. Okay. Very good. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Alright, so going back up on our list here, we have, uh, next up, safety officer. We have our highway superintendent as our safety off, officer and hopefully, uh, willing to continue in that position.
Sure.
Feeling safe, okay, very good. Uh, disaster preparedness and civil defense. I hope I don't need to use the civil defense part. Um, is the town supervisor, as well as emergency interim successors. They are now listed as the supervisor, our highway superintendent, and councilperson, Harry Colgan, with a vacancy after that. Who would like to join that list of emergency interim successors? Would there like to be another town board member on that?
Have they listed it in order of how they.
Yes.
They are, yes.
It's sequential. Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Sarah, that was you?
Yeah.
Unless, maybe you should, Sue.
No, I, I'm busy.
You don't even get a siren. You don't even get a siren on your cover, no?
Okay, we have receiver of taxes, registrar, water rents collector, issuing agent handicap parking permits, are all Sue McCann. And if that's all right with you, I think you'd like to keep it that way. Um, assessor, we have, our assessor is, uh, getting close to finishing up the, uh, sixth month probationary period, filling the appointment. Which, um, is a six-year appointment, but it's the vacancy that was created, and that's good through September thirty first of twenty nineteen. And we don't need to, uh, appoint her, she is in the position as we speak. Uh, the same is true of our building and zoning and purchasing. And we've already signed a contract with D S P C A for animal control officer. And our panda representatives, I don't believe have changed, um, but we should double check with, um, uh, building and grounds. We have supervisor, highway superintendent, our court clerks are the same. Um, then we get to some of our contracted, uh, consultants and attorneys. Um, our attorneys for the town have been, uh, Rodenhausen Schall. And, um, I don't know how you all feel, but I think we're getting very good service from that firm. And I would, uh, like to make a motion that we, um, continue again for twenty eighteen with, uh, Rodenhausen Schall as our attorneys. Second, that's agreeable, okay. Um, any further discussion on that appointment?
What, what was the original contract, it's forty-two?
Uh, the budget amount is forty-two thousand for twenty eighteen.
What was it before, thirty-four?
Uh, it's, it's gone up a thousand dollars each month, we put it on a minor increase each month.
No, no.
I mean, each, thank you, thank you.
Each year.
No, no.
So.
Each month would be nice, forty-two for the year.
It's forty, forty-two, but it's only an increase of a thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's right. So, shall we do a vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Okay, town engineer, so we've been working with or are in the process of about to be working with several firms, one of which obviously has been, uh, working, uh, primarily for the town's planning board. Um, but we have, uh, to the benefit of our taxpayers, been working with different firms who have expertise or have a history. For example, uh, Chazen and Russell Urban Meat on a very small project, but because they're so familiar with our, uh, water resources. In fact, did an extensive study twenty years ago or so. Um, so, you know, I would like to suggest that we go ahead and appoint several firms, um, and perhaps do an R F P as an alternative or do one later. Um, but knowing that we would have special projects and we might refer to all these firms where we have letters of agreements because we've worked with them in the past or in the recent, um, timeframe. So that's Crawford and Associates, Ty and Bond, Weston and Sampson, who did our Red Park Annex, uh, design, and, uh, Chazen and Company, so there are four firms. And I wonder if you have some thoughts about that, if that makes sense to you, or, um.
Certainly suggesting we appoint four town engineers?
Uh, I'm suggesting that we appoint four, uh, firms. One, we would, uh, have Crawford and Associates be the engineers of record for, um, the highway department and for any other special projects for the town. Ty and Bond as a special project, um, engineer, same for Weston and Sampson, and same for Chazen and Co. I think it's, I think it's worked well, yeah?
I guess I'm just wondering, like, what's the, so I know with, for example, with our attorneys, you know, they do a lot of work, like, on our behalf, sort of. And, um, we have like a yearly build amount that we just discussed, so it makes sense to appoint one. With the engineer, why do we appoint one at all if we're, you know, if we're going to use them in different ways? Or why not have like a highway one that's appointed, you know, and like split those out if we're going to do separate ones? I'm just wondering, like, what's the role of appointing an engineer? Since we don't appoint other things, say like a website services company or a, uh, you know, a, a computer services company? Because we might decide to make a contract with someone else, for example.
One of the, one of the things that might be actually, uh, more frugal is by having, uh, when we have projects, we can, we can ask more than one of them to give us a, a, uh, an, an, a, uh, estimate of, of the cost this way. If we had four that we were working with, and, and they're not, they're not guaranteed, they're not, they're not guaranteed each project. And, uh, uh, and depending on whom they are, or, or whatever the, the case may be, then we can, uh.
And that's what, that's what we are doing, and we could do that even without appointing them, and we do do that. Um, but this would just sort of recognize that we have ongoing relationships, um, with these firms for special projects. They all have, um, areas where they're, you know, have greater strengths than others and, you know.
I'd be comfortable with that, really, if work with the four, then. That's all.
Okay.
Engineering companies don't, don't care about that, I mean, it just seems like a strange.
Well, we don't work for that.
Why would they?
We work for the task.
No, I know, but why would they want, yeah, I don't know, just, I'm, I guess I'm just not sure, you know. I don't know, it just seems strange to me, I mean, I'm trying to think of another situation where you appoint, like, many different firms to one position. And I'm wondering, like, why are we even bothering, like, do we have to have an appointed town engineer of record? And if so, like, what's the restriction on that, like, having two newspapers versus one, or, you know, that kind of thing?
It's important to have some clarity so that, you know, like, the highway department, for example, knows who to call when they have engineering questions. Um, but I think it's, you know, we can handle having three or four firms that are designated, we've, we've had it in the past, I think, yeah.
You've done it, you've done it.
We've had a couple of firms, um, not that many years ago.
Actually appointed.
Yeah.
Well, they weren't appointed, that.
No, they've, they've never been appointed before, like, we'll have, like, we'll have projects and we'll contact with them.
No, 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 I guess we have, I guess we have. No, I guess we've had two engineering firms that we appointed, yeah.
We had Dan Wheeler and we had Morris Associates.
Well, I know that appointed is the correct, we, the, the correct maybe, uh, name for it, and, because they're, they're, they're not guaranteed each job.
Right.
And, 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 uh, we don't want to guarantee, I would, I'd prefer not to guarantee, uh.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I guess, it's like, you know, like, the attorneys for the town are obviously guaranteed our, our, you know, attorney-related work, you know what I mean?
Will they do? The inter- attorney.
We've already contracted with them for a billable amount, we have, you know what I mean? The, the engineers are different because we, on a per-project basis, we, you know, contract with them.
That's exactly it, in a, on a per-proj- per-project basis, where.
Which is why it didn't really seem to matter that much that we had a appointed firm, or whatever we're going to call it. And then we had firms that we might use for one or two specific projects. And I'm, guess I'm wondering, why do we need to appoint the other three? Why not just have Crawford and Associates as, if we're going to keep them for our general stuff and our highway stuff? And then the other ones, why do we need to appoint them, why not just keep them as special projects?
I would, I would favor going out for an R F P if we're just going to appoint one. I wouldn't be, feel comfortable selecting just one at this point.
But if we do four, we.
Can we just do R F P?
But we just did one a few years ago.
Not for the town, no, and, and we're required to do it from time to time to go out and R F P.
If we have the four, you don't have to do an R F P?
What's that?
If we have the four named, then you do not have to do an R F P?
We have letter of engagements with all of these firms, um, and we've done, like, for example, we went out and did an R F P when we, um, contracted with Weston and Sampson years ago to develop that Red Park Annex. So we wouldn't need to go out and get a new R F P with Weston and Sampson now that we need them to just tweak the plan that they originally did for, um, uh, changes to the project site, for example. Um, the same thing.
Right, so, what, what is the reason for having all four named?
The, the reason is just so that we can designate and acknowledge all four of these firms that we will be utilizing during the course of the year without designating one as the official engineering firm.
But there can only be one town engineer.
No.
So you don't really have a town engineer, a town engineer, like a town attorney would be, have, have, um, a town resident, basically, who was, um, a public officer? Um, you've engaged by contract, your attorney and also, you've traditionally done that with your engineer, um, engaged a firm by contract, um, based on their qualifications, um, and.
Usually the town engineer is somebody local who, you know, expects a phone call almost regularly from the town to do something. So it would not be a, you know, another firm that specializes in certain things, like your red park, uh, work or, uh, Chazen, you know, right? Isn't that what the town engineer always has been?
This gives us greater flexibility to designate these firms, to be able to reach out to them at any time to do work that we think is appropriate for their expertise.
When we did the sidewalk, we had yet, yet, yet another engineer that was required through the grant that, that we would, we had no option to.
Yet another one, yeah.
Yeah, but the sidewalk, but the sidewalk one was, that was through an R F P process, so that's different, it's not.
Mm-hmm. But that's not somebody we, we, uh, expect to engage on a regular basis.
Right. Yeah.
And these firms, we can have expectations to utilize them going forward, yeah?
Uh, I know I'm new, but it seemed, I mean, it seems cumbersome to me to have four named town engineers. And, you know, it's my understanding that usually you enter into these contracts with a town attorney, a town engineer, a town planner, et cetera. More as Bill said, so you have someone on retainer, they understand your, um, whatever it might be, highway needs, your, um, town board requirements for legal reviews or in the planning board case, you know, planning board issues land use law. Um, and so, you know, you negotiate a contract which is beneficial, um, financially, it gives you the opportunity to do that since you're going to be guaranteeing a certain number of hours.
It doesn't, it doesn't work quite work that way, we actually, they, they provide rates. And so it works, I think actually the opposite of that, which is that you get to turn to your engineer who's been working on your highway garage, for example, but doesn't work for that firm anymore. And so is familiar with your highway garage, and if you're doing something on the highway garage, can say, um, okay, knowing this, this background, um, we can do, um, the analysis you need in less time. Or you can turn to the firm that did your red park and say, okay, we can do this in less time. Um, they provide rates in, in all the agreements that we sign with them, so there's no real advantage, it's an hourly rate to us. But yes, there needs to be clear instruction for our boards, um, the planning board is separate, but, uh, for our highway department, for example, that, you know, you're to call this firm when you have questions. So I, I think it gives us greater flexibility and, and better for the taxpayer, really, because we can turn to the, the experts, if you will.
Who are going to charge us more money, right? I don't know how it's good for the taxpayer, anyway, the, the, uh, the town, uh, appointments, say, town engineer, singular, so.
Uh, we've had, we've had several firms that we, I know.
Never, never as town engineer, they were just contracted separately in addition to.
No, 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 they were listed as town engineer in the real, more than one.
When we, even.
Even during your time, I think.
I doubt it.
When we wanted to, uh, the design for the, for the new rec park, we, we requested proposals from a, a variety of engine, you know, you just, just kind of threw it to the wind.
Of course.
And, and we had several people come in wanting to make proposals and, and.
Yeah, but that, that separate and apart from the town engineer's role, it's.
Well, they, they have, we have, and we have since then, we've maintained a relationship with them, um.
That's a special project.
Yeah, the town engineer does not need to be one firm.
So, if you want them to be town engineer, then propose it.
Well, under certain circumstances, it might be, it would probably be desirable to call them as opposed to one of these other people that we've talked about here.
So, we've, we've, I mean, we've operated like this in the past where we've used different firms for different things anyway, without appointing them as town engineers, so why?
We know them for that.
Why should we?
We've done both.
Yeah, but I think what we're all asking is, why are we doing this?
Why don't we do this?
Why are we doing this?
Do we ask the highway?
Sell it, sell it to us, Robert, we don't understand, why are we doing this?
The highway superintendent is in the same situation, um, with the town engineer appointment as you would be with the person who was working on the highway garage. Because the person is most familiar with the, um, highway department's needs, has now gone to a different firm. So, if the highway department is going to be tied to a, a firm, um, where there is no longer the knowledge of the highway department and the roads that's been there in the past, is it really important to designate that firm as the town engineer if that's what it's going to be used for?
Well, that's, that's a good example, so we will, we will be able to take the particular circumstance and say, okay, this person had experience with that.
So I think if.
So we can turn to them at firm B, uh, instead of firm A in order to get, um, the best answer that we can and the most efficient answer.
Well, if firm B's rates are higher than firm C's, you know.
No, 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 the rates are, again, this is separate and apart, we have a letter of agreements for them, all their rates. So it's not going to impact the rates, if you want to consolidate all the work into one firm, then I would suggest we just do an R F P for, uh, a singular firm. I don't think that benefits the taxpayer that we operate that way, but we can.
But why, why do we even have to do that, Robert? Because if, if some project comes up that needs a special attention, we just deal with that separately. We don't, we don't, we don't, we're not bound to this town engineer to do everything that comes up.
No, you're, no, you're not, you're not.
So, do we still have the flexibility to reach out for a different firm that, uh, someone would feel would be better?
I think we were all talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
I, I really, I know, I think it's more semantics.
So we're just going round and round.
I would just say, if we're going to have one firm, I would recommend that we go out and do an R F P, I don't think that's the best process for us right now. Because we're in the, in the stage where we're really trying to figure out who would, we would want if we were to be relegated just to one firm.
That's a tough thing, because knowing these firms and having worked with, with each of them at one point, one point of another, they have, they, I know them, I know their skills.
Yeah.
And, and, and they're, I would, I would be, I'm, I'm inclined to focus on, on, on one particular, one firm or the other, depending upon the needs.
Why don't we just not appoint one?
Hmm?
Well, we certainly can take some more time if you want to think about to that next.
Do we need to have one of record? Do we need to have an engineer of record? I know we're required to have a newspaper and I don't know if we're required to have an attorney, but it's prudent to have one.
Hey, well, we don't, we don't have to, we don't have to appoint.
But are we required to have one, a town engineer?
Look, we don't have to have one, we could appoint a few of them, we've had a couple of them in the past. I think it's frankly, it's more semantics than, than anything. If you would like to consolidate all the work into one firm, I strongly would ask you that we go out and R F P for that.
I don't think that would work.
I don't think that would benefit us, I think we're better off, we'll appoint all these firms, we'll utilize them where it benefits us and the taxpayers to utilize them individually with, with our needs so that we can address them, and be my argument. I don't know if I made the sell, as you said.
I guess I just feel like, so we'll, we'll appoint all four, and then one of the, one of our, our favorite engineers will leave to another firm, and so next year we'll appoint five, and the, I mean, I just, I'm just.
So we want the four, Chazen?
Yeah. I don't.
I don't, I think, I don't know, I, I still don't understand why we're doing four.
I think it's to the benefit of the taxpayers.
I don't think it's an appointment, it's a list of, of, of four, four engineers who can be, a, a list we can select from.
That's it.
Okay, so let's just keep, let's just keep a list, but, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a list at home of the plumbers that we have used in our house, but, I mean.
There you go.
It's about what it boils down to, it's that.
There you go, yeah, exactly.
Right, okay, so, but I'm, I'm uncomfortable having it as an appointment on this list, if we're going to have four. I think it's great to have a list of four or six.
Now, what were the four, okay? Crawford, Chazen.
Crawford and Associates, Ty and Bond, Weston and Sampson, and Chazen Company. Would you prefer that we just do the two Crawford and Associates and Ty and Bond, that we're doing the majority of the work with? And then have the other two just be special projects and we don't list them?
It doesn't make any difference.
Does that seem like a good compromise in between?
If we have a water thing, we have to call Chazen, because they know the history of the town, of the water thing, huh?
We don't have to, we don't have to, we're not bound to call them.
Well, no, except I sure would, that's who I'd want to call if I had a water, water issue.
Yeah, but then Russell Urban Meat is going to go leave and start his own firm, and you're going to like call him.
Yeah, well, I think you're, yes, that's right, that's right, that's right, that's right.
So, I mean, this is, there's a never-ending amount of options here, so.
Yeah, I think we're making a mountain of it.
And if you were going to call somebody out for water, you might as well call V R I or whatever, you know.
Yes. So let's, let's just have a list of four.
But they're, they're not an engineer.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, I'm going to go with our newest town board member suggests we just have the list of four. All right, so I'm gonna go with our newest town board member suggests we just have the list of four.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
She's bright, she's smart, and she's good.
Can we live with that? We'll list the four firms and then move on. Mister O'Neil?
Yeah.
Deputy supervisor, okay, thank you very much. And if at such time we wanna RP, we can do that in the near future. Deputy supervisor has already been appointed by the town supervisor. Budget officer is actually the town supervisor unless he appoints somebody or she appoints somebody. Secretary is Jackie and that will continue to be the case. Town historian, we just made that appointment. The assistant as well. Town clerk's appointments, are there any changes to the town clerk's appointments?
No, that remains the same.
Okay. Very good. Deputy superintendent of highways, there's change there? No?
No, changes at all.
Okay, thank you. Highway secretary is Lori Pierce. Assistant budget officer, I think I sent you an email. It would be great if we could consider appointing Ann Conway as the assistant budget officer. She provides a lot of information in the budget process. That's okay with you all?
I assumed she was already, that's okay.
Okay.
Joe Vanen?
Vanen, everybody okay with that?
Yeah, it's true.
Hold on a favor, all right, thanks very much. Bookkeeper, well, that's a supervisor appointment, that'll remain Anne. Deputy assessors, that all stays the same. All right, I'm all the way down to the end of page one, our rec park and program director, John Keon. We have a vacancy on the groundskeeper, but I think, I think we actually filled that one. You can find out from John.
He, he has a list that he's made up.
Who was that? That wasn't Boric, was it? Who was it?
I don't know.
I'm trying to remember that.
I can't remember the name.
Okay, yeah, we'll get that from John and we'll put that in there. Water district meter readers, I don't believe there's any change with those. We're back to contracts and consultants. Town physician, coming for planning board. Operator, we just signed a contract. Same thing with software. Planner, any thoughts on planner? I don't know when the last time you went out and did an RP on the planner is, but how you all feel about the service we're getting from our planner?
I feel good about the service and I would say that I think it's a great idea to do RFPs from time to time, but I'm not sure if this is the year to do it for planner if, if we're satisfied. Given that we're making some changes on the planning board.
Changes, yeah.
The training process of a new planner is, is, is just.
It might be that it has some stability. But that's if everybody's satisfied. I personally am satisfied with the job they're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and I agree with your point that this would be not an opportune time to change planners. Since we've changed our planning board chair. Does that make sense, Christine?
Yeah, I said, I would, agreed, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll reappoint our green plan as our planner. Our CPA, Lori Doty, I think we're very happy with the service. It's a very economical service for auditing. Cleaning. And police, we appoint the village of Red Hook, police department and the county sheriff's deputy. Even though we only engage one of those two. So we have a multiple appointments here, we do not have. I think they sent an updated and I shared with you their rate sheets last month. Okay, meetings. We covered that, annual reports. We'll be getting some of those. Town board organizational responsibility, I think we have that listed correctly. Mileage reimbursement.
Um, the mileage reimbursement, maybe you can see, I think it's been, there's an updated number?
Yeah, it's in the first resolution.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I guess you can't update it before you count that number.
Fifty-four and a half.
That's right.
Yeah, fifty-four and a half.
Well, I keep trying to tap my tech. In real time, I'll say.
I wouldn't say that.
Okay, so town departments on page three, folks. Chain of command. That doesn't change. Town board liaisons to town departments. So we have to give some thought to this. And I noticed and had some comments from some of you that we do have two liaisons sometimes to one department or one committee. We might wanna reconsider that, that seems to be overkill and then how do you allocate? Who is the liaison for that? And we have a new town board member, so we need to do some allocation.
You only need one, right?
I think so. I mean, I'd be happy, Bill, or Sarah with assessor, I'd be happy since I'm here during the days to be the liaison to the assessor.
Scratch me, that's good.
All right, I've worked with you. You have to wait to see what you're getting instead of that before you smile though, Bill. Attorney, St. Bart College, I guess I was a liaison for that, I'd be happy to stay at that. Bookkeeper, obviously that's an appointment of mine. So building inspector.
I can be the liaison.
I would, I would do that too.
You want an Arri?
I talk to him almost every day.
Give it to Arri. Scratch me, please.
Harry Colvin. Animal control, Sarah never wants to give that up.
No.
Ever.
That's, yeah.
So we won't, we won't, we won't fight her on that. Thank you, Sarah.
Fire companies. Christine, you wanna work on the fire companies?
No, I think you can keep that one.
We need two though.
So you're not gonna get three. You're already on, you're already on the fire company.
Just want one.
He's just trying to get rid of everything, I know.
Bill.
All right, so I'm the fire company?
I think you're the fire company. I would join you in that, whatever. If you need a backup, I'll be your backup.
Very happy to help.
Okay.
Highway department, we have both myself and Harry listed for that. Harry, I hope you're willing to stay out for that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Do we wanna list both then or just Harry?
I think you can take me off of that, that's fine.
Okay.
Um, purchasing, Harry, you're down for that as well. I'm not seeing any Christine's here yet, but all right. Uh, Harry, we'll keep you there. Recycling, Sarah, you're good with that?
Yeah.
Red Hook Central School District, who's, who's getting that, folks? Sarah, Bill?
I definitely want to stay on it. I don't mind sharing it with Bill.
She scratched me.
Bill's still great.
Oh, you're an alumnus.
I think you're the only one here who graduated from there.
Okay, special projects, Bill O'Neil, I am task force, that's you. We're taking Harry off that, okay?
They might have to say.
Yeah.
Harry to work on that. Make sense?
Yeah.
All right, town clerk.
Clerk, to be who?
Even though she's all the way over there, I can be her liaison.
Maybe.
Village, uh, Sarah, you're the liaison.
I'm gonna be Tivoli.
Where's, where's?
I really, Christine, I'm, I'm, what do you wanna be?
Get your name on the list.
Well, Christine should do Tivoli, I think.
You should speak up, Christine, what do you wanna be?
Yeah. What about Tivoli?
Right now, there's only the village of Tivoli liaison left. I'm happy to do that if you want. Bill and Harry are currently.
Harry, would you mind if we appointed Christine for that spot?
Well, I have kind of relationship with all those people. I get regular, we could both do it.
We're both okay.
I live in Tivoli.
Then I spill off another one.
And they invite me to everything and I go, I'm.
Okay, so Christine and Harry, we have them too somewhere.
You may not have the bandit there, huh?
How bad, when do you get to the board and committee liaisons?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll pull you back in four days.
Okay, so can we tackle quickly liaisons for boarding committees? Agriculture and open space, and I'd like to talk about that and see if we can maybe reconstitute that and get that up and running again. But Bill, are you willing to stay on as liaison? Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
Board of assessment, I'd be happy to stay on. Board of ethics, they never meet, fortunately.
Is that Harry and you or just?
I think.
They haven't met in two years.
Yeah. Harry, do you want that maybe? Or, or I can do, I can do it.
We need, we need to find, we need to find another Democrat. There's an opening for a Democrat.
Okay.
Oh, I know somebody.
Okay.
Do you?
Yeah, I know somebody who, who expressed interest. She's a.
Really?
Hofstra history professor and she's never volunteered at the town before, but when she, she wants to volunteer on a committee and she looked at the committees and she's really, you know, she has background in ethics and
Right.
she doesn't know what they do, but I said, well, it's not, you know.
They haven't done anything in two, two or three years.
Yeah, anyway, I'll have her put something together and submit it, so it's great to talk to the chairs.
Yeah. Very good. So Harry, am I gonna be the liaison or you? Cause we're, we're shooting it possible for just one person.
Hmm? Yeah, all right, I'll keep it.
You'll keep it? Okay, thanks, Harry. All right, CPF advisory committee.
Now, there's one I'm interested in.
Oh, Christine, you're interested in that?
There's a, there's a, there's a little bit of churn there now that I've had a number of conversations with those people.
What do you think, Harry?
You know, I, I, I would, I, I, I wouldn't wanna at this point.
Give it up?
Make changes or whatever.
Okay, so Harry, why don't you be the liaison with Christine on that one?
Okay, that's, that's a good, that would be a good trajectory.
Okay, so we'll leave that one or two. Okay. Communications committee.
If we need people for that one, I know somebody who might be interested. For CPF, yeah.
Yeah, great. Communications committee, Sarah, you'll stick with that obviously, cause we're in the midst of that stuff.
If anybody wants to join the communications committee, please send an email to myself or Sumacan with your background, cause we're, it would be nice to have a couple more people.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody from, yeah.
Okay. Conservation advisory council, so who wants to do that?
Sarah does it, right?
Sarah does it, or I, I could throw my name in that one if you want. I don't really care, whatever. Sarah, you wanna stick with it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to stick with it.
Okay.
Does Bill come off another one?
I think Bill's coming off another one. Where, don't worry, we got a couple new committees we need to have Bill working on.
Cause Bill's looking.
All right, design review hamlet. You know, maybe that's one you should do, Bill, instead of Harry.
There's not that much work to it at all.
Yeah, put me down for that.
Yeah, I think that's a good one. Put them down for them. Okay. Disaster preparedness, so another fun one for me, okay. Economic development committee, Harry, you go to those meetings? You wanna, you wanna stick with that one?
I do. Yeah.
Okay. Energy committee, I go to those meetings, so I can stick with that one. Greenway and Trails.
I would love to get found up.
That has Christine Kane's name written all over it.
I knew that was coming.
Is that all right with you, Christine?
Do they, is there meeting scheduled?
You don't have to answer yes now, you can answer yes later.
They're meeting, they meet next week, that'll be the third Tuesday. They meet typically on the third Tuesday of the month at seven, I think? It's either seven or seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty? Yeah, you guys meet at seven, right? It's the same as the trees committee. Here at town hall. Usually they meet in the conference room.
Yeah, well, communications committee, we.
They meet the first Wednesday of the month typically. We could change it though. Communications is gonna be weird now because with working with the website, we're gonna have to constitute like a special working group for the website and that may meet more during the day because we're gonna have to talk to the firm, which I think typically does their work during obviously normal business hours, so.
They're a little behind us, right?
Yeah.
An hour or two, not much.
Right, so we're gonna have to figure that out, so you and I can talk and see what, yeah. But I think the committee will contain a meet once a month in the evening.
Okay, so we may have talked Christine into Greenway and Trails. You wanna think about that?
Well, let me talk to Sarah and see, get a better idea of what we're doing.
Okay, so we got a question mark on Greenway and Trails. Well, for right now, why don't we keep Sarah?
Just take me off. Take me off. I'm not doing it anymore.
So we'll just have.
So take me off and you, you guys fight about it. I think Christine would be great, but any of you would be great.
Sounds like she's fishing. Okay. Planning.
Bill would be great.
Planning board.
Gee, I could take that one.
That, that seems like maybe that might make sense.
Just one person? Shall I just do one?
I think so.
I think that's one that doesn't make sense to have more than one, I don't see how you can, yeah.
I think so, yes. Planning board, okay. Christine, uh, recommission, all right, so we have two for recommission.
Come to fight.
Harry?
Hmm? You know, I've been involved in that for a long time and I think it's probably better, better if I stay there and we should make Sarah, Sarah in charge of the, of the playground.
Playground, little, little kids there. Okay, why don't we have both of you remain as recommission liaisons? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. St. Margaret's Committee.
Sounds like a spot for Bill.
Bill O'Neil.
I think the supervisor should be there, but I'll be there, yeah, don't make me, I'll be there.
I can't believe you turned to me after all that.
So who is it?
It's Bill O'Neil.
Bill.
In honor of his wonderful sister who wrote an incredible book about Red Hook.
I used to drink turtle sip in that house. One fifties.
Wow, okay.
It was when the Thompsons lived there.
It sounds like you're a natural fit for this job.
I'll go back.
Turtle sip, okay, so that's work for us to do is reconstituting the St. Margaret's Committee. Okay, senior services committee, right now we have Sarah and Robert and I, whatever. Sarah, are you able to make those meetings?
I typically don't end up making them.
Yeah, I have a hard time too because I have a lot of work in the morning.
It's hard, yeah.
Harry, Harry, you're.
Great, Bill. You got a good word, Bill.
I know Bill talked at length about how much he enjoys being here at the town hall for.
No, I don't do senior, I don't have a card for senior citizens. I don't attend senior citizens.
Interacting with our dedicated volunteers and employees.
See, you know I'm older than most of them there, I know, Bill.
So, just cause you're on the car doesn't mean you can't go to meetings.
You don't wanna put me on senior citizen, you know?
Yeah, I have the same, okay, I have the same feeling.
I have the same, okay.
I'll take him at work.
Okay, we have two members in denial that they're seniors.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Basically can't stand with people the way they.
I'm not sure that.
Do they meet during the daytime? I mean, if they meet during the daytime, then I can't go, so.
All right, let it go.
They do meet during the daytime.
Right, so it has to, it has to be somebody here who can go meetings during the daytime.
Okay. Robert McKeon is going to be the liaison for the senior service.
Where is it written that the liaison has to have a physical appearance at those meetings?
Oh, stop.
It's not.
Well, it's good to have it.
Well, if you have a working relationship.
Sister Cities, there's very little work involved with Sister Cities, but I'd be happy to stay on. I meet with the folks from our sister city when they come over here and I guess I should take a trip over there one of these days.
Was there Sister City? I didn't know about this.
Over in Palestine?
Yeah.
And the town pay for it?
No.
No, okay. I was gonna say, that's not more than your liaison, right?
He's gonna sign up, he's gonna sign up, we're gonna tell him the town will cover it.
What's, what is our sister city? I was unaware of this.
Masah, right?
It's in, it's in Palestine.
What's the name of the city?
Masasa. M A S, S A?
Apostrophe.
Two S's, right?
Yeah.
M A S S.
Or apostrophe H. All right, tree preservation committee. Mission, I'm sorry, commission.
I'll stay on that.
Okay, so who's the liaison for that? Water district advisory board.
Unless we have any change. No, no, no.
I've been, I've been going to their meetings anyway.
Yeah, so Harry, you should be there, okay? Harry Colvin. ZBA zoning board of appeals. Bill, you're the only one listed there right now.
Yeah, I'll be right.
You'll be right with that? Okay, okay. And zoning review committee.
Cool, go back. I'll be that too. Go back, go back.
Nice. Nice. Where would you like to go back to?
On your chart there, go back to the.
Oh, I'm so sorry, yeah, of course. Um and then, you know, I gave you a little list in this, uh, there are a couple committees we need to constitute, one is the Complete Streets. I gave you a list of folks who were willing to serve on that, um, a few of them, we need some more. And um, so please think about that again, if you could add one or two people, and then on the twenty-fourth, maybe we could constitute that committee. Um, the Red Church Cemetery, we're gonna be talking about and maybe entertaining a resolution at our next meeting, because we need to start work on the Red Church and apply for grants, so that we can get the equipment to properly maintain the cemetery. So um, I guess what I'm asking with Red Church Cemetery is if there would be a liaison, one of you interested. Um, the folks who are responsible for the operations are willing to stay on for, you know, quite some time until we've got the hang of it and will show us everything that we need, um, but it's, we do need somebody to, you know, coordinate between the town and, and the group there and to have a.
They really need a cadre of volunteers to help manage that situation.
Right.
They have both expressed that they are really, you know, they've done this for years and years, and somebody else really needs to step up and help. So I think we need to make that clear and ask people to step up and help with this.
Right, so we need to get more members for that committee, and we also need to have a liaison. I'm looking for somebody who lives near the Red Church Cemetery. And I'm not particular, it can be either one of two individuals living near the Red Church.
Didn't you guys build the Red Church?
What? What did you say? I think she asked if you helped build the Red Church.
She asked if one of your three married.
My dear.
Well, you don't have to work on it.
You will?
I can, I can reach you.
Oh, Bill O'Neill. Folks, I don't know if you heard Bill O'Neill offer to be the liaison, but I think it's terrific, and I think, again, I think your sister would be very happy to hear that. And if anybody else would like to help?
I'm gonna ask Emily.
What?
I'm gonna ask Emily if she knows any folks that might be interested.
In helping, yes, and I've reached out to the village of Tivoli, may I ask him to?
Our new historian.
Yeah. Um, and then we need to, we have this LWRP update, and I wondered, Bill, if maybe we could run that through your.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Your task force, your task force, and we have some individuals who want to participate and who should participate. Representative from Bard, Amy Houston, who's in charge of Montgomery Place, is willing to help with the LR, LWRP, you know, they own about a thousand acres in that district. Emily Major, a new town historian.
What is the purpose of that committee though, by the way?
Uh, to do the, as you know, we got the Department of State grant to update our twenty-two-year-old now uh, local waterfront revitalization plan, and the purpose of that committee would be to um bring forward recommendations on how to update that plan and amend that plan, and a list of potential projects and so on and so forth. So it seems like a natural to run through your task force Friday morning.
Yeah.
Um, and certainly.
Well, what about, okay, but.
Yeah, alright, go ahead.
Why is it a natural to go through the task force?
Um, because when we applied for the grant, we listed as volunteers for that grant, as matching funds, we listed individuals like Brent Cavalcio, Bill O'Neill, um, Ted Fink, obviously wrote the grant, but he was not a, um, a match, that was a grant funded, so um, there are these other individuals, we can just make a second subcommittee though, if you think, I was just wondering trying to be efficient with people's time, and maybe, um, it also bring more people into the task force for a specific project, at least once in a while on Fridays, but if you have other ideas, please. Let, you know, let us know.
Did you wanna take it or what?
I don't wanna take it, no, I don't want anything to do with that.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I would help with the LWRP thing, I've worked on it in Tivoli and whatever.
Okay. Okay.
It doesn't seem very intermunicipal, that's all.
That way, that way comes on Friday.
What's that?
It just doesn't seem very intermunicipal.
The LWRP?
Yeah.
Well, it is though, because it's, you know, there's an LWRP for Tivoli.
Right, that's what I'm saying, Tivoli has their own.
They do.
Then the village doesn't have to do this, does, they don't have an LW.
The village does not.
Right, so it's really just the town's LWRP.
Right, but we, we, we think about these things in context of the entire township, including the village in this case of Tivoli, and how projects, for example, what projects might we propose? Um, and how does that mesh with what they're proposing in their plan or trails and so on and so forth.
Chris, did you work on that in, in Tivoli?
I did.
You did, yeah, yeah, and after you, I've worked on it a little bit.
Okay.
I mean, it just seems like, I mean, I don't, I don't think you need a huge committee to work on that, and you might be able to get it done faster if you just.
Yeah, I would think like a working group of, of a few people.
Yeah, I don't think it's, I don't think it needs a big committee either, from my experience with it.
Yeah.
There's only so many issues you can deal with.
Yeah, I don't, I just, I have a hard time seeing it happen in the task force, but I guess I also wondered if, well, I, you know, we shouldn't volunteer each other, but like Christine has a background that's very well suited to the LWRP, so we should at least just maybe
Okay.
think about who oughta be on that, I don't know.
So scratch my name and then you can.
Well, no, 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 we're not scratching anybody.
Well, I'm the thing, it's because of me, and I don't wanna speak for Christine, I'm just throwing that out there that, you know.
Gary, Sarah, and Chris.
No, 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 we're not so. Yeah. Okay, well, look, we're not doing this until the next meeting, January twenty-fourth, so there's lots of times, lots of time to give it thought. I'm just thinking in terms of being efficient with, uh, with meeting times. But certainly, Christine, if you wanna participate, uh, we just need to then have a nightly meeting, right, if you're gonna be a part of that. Or maybe you could sort of review some of the things coming up, but you obviously will in the position you are now.
Right, because I mean, I was gonna say, because if you can't go to the Friday, it's just for task committees.
Right. Right, then we'll have to get a whole bunch of people to go to night meetings, so. And like Brent, for example, we can't do that.
That'll ever get, that'll ever get worked out.
Yeah, so give it some thought, and then what else, that's another task that we need to meet, and I think I think that's all we can accomplish for tonight, so at this point, what I would like to do is entertain a motion to update our appointments and reorganization through um page three here as enumerated.
Did you put any down as part of it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, all of this is updated.
Were you updated, did, did you do it in the little list? Anyway, so.
Yeah, it's all, yeah, all the, all the changes that we discussed. Um, I'd like to, to put forth a, a motion to approve those, uh, Town of Red Hook twenty eighteen town appointments as described.
So moved.
Very good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, we'll take up the remainder, or at least a good chunk of the remainder of reorganization at our next meeting. Um, at this time, we have a couple of quick administrative things to accomplish. Each year, um, we designate a delegate to the Association of Towns, to the three thousand town supervisor, if he or she is able to attend the meeting. I will be there again this year, in fact, I have to do a presentation, uh, one of those uh seminars on street lights, seven D conversions. So.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, would somebody like to make a motion to designate the supervisor for voting matters at the Association of Towns?
Tell me when you're meeting, thank you, Harry.
So moved, have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, okay, so where's the passes? Um, there are resolutions, proposed resolutions that they have put forth. And I don't know if you've had enough time to study all of them, there are a couple that I need to give additional thought to myself. But I wondered whether or not at our next meeting, we could vote on which proposed legislative resolutions to support.
I have not seen yet.
Okay, so that's a good reason to hold on until the next meeting, so there are.
No, we'll put to the next one, I didn't get chance to draw them.
There are fourteen, okay, there are fourteen resolutions, some of which you wanna give some thought to.
Have you ever seen a list this long before?
Uh, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it seems comprehensive, and some of them are well, you wanna think of them.
Yeah.
Um, there's been a discussion um about clarification, the modification of our zoning to um make clear that subsurface and other utilities may extend outside a zoning district. And so we were asked to draft a proposed local law, and I, very short one. And I don't know if you've had any questions about that, um. What I had hoped to do this evening is to set a public hearing, perhaps, for next month sometime, at a February thirteenth meeting, and establish lead agency and refer this to the various planning boards of the county and town for their input. It's a pretty simple little law, which says that within these um commercial districts, that the subsurface system can extend outside of the zoning district provided is still on the same line.
This is just an addendum to the TMD, right?
That's a pretty well spoken. Yeah. Okay, so um.
What, what brought this up? How did it even, it's such a, it's, it's, it strikes me as, as in holding a category of myth.
Well, it was something that came, yeah, it came forward to us, it was, as often happens, Harry, that, you know, when particular projects come forward, they, they remind us that we um, that we have um further clarification that we need to do of our zoning, so. Um, we have a Part One EAF. And do we have?
We also have a CAF.
A CAF and an LWRP.
The LWRP is a form to be forwarded to the Planning Board.
Did they come back to us yet, or?
No, no, we are in the process here, this is the first introduction of the law.
No, we are. Yeah. First.
So then, you will, um, as, if you adopt a resolution establishing public hearing as part of the local law process, then in that resolution, you will forward um the LWRP form to the Planning Board along with the request that they comment unsubstantively on the law and then also on its consistency with the LWRP principles.
Number five, yeah, so I, I'm with the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
That's resolution number two.
And we have to, on the, on the, on the four, you have to cross out Kingston Freeman.
Let's establish.
Is that one question? Is it type one action?
Yes.
It is, and so we don't have a secret.
So it's a type one action because it's townwide, because of the definition.
Is it an egregious, right? Okay.
So um, and also because anything townwide hits historic district, so, yeah.
Okay.
That's why.
Yep.
And the secret determination is included in the resolution, where we, whereby.
So on.
We determine it as a type one, and the Town Board to be lead agency.
As the only involved, right?
Yeah.
And um, did you wanna set a time and a date then?
I do.
As part of this?
Yes, we would propose that we would set a public hearing, because the Planning Board does not have a meeting until the end of the month for our February meeting, and that would be February thirteenth at seven thirty-five.
So then the blank in number four would be February third, in ten days.
Yes, and we would amend this to read the Poughkeepsie Journal.
Right, delete and the Kingston Freeman.
Yeah.
What time did you say, Robert?
Seven thirty-five.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, you said February third, for number four?
Correct.
Okay, and as amended, um, the, uh, motion is by Bill, the second is by Harry. Without further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, we will at this time refer to the County Planning Board and the Town Planning Board for their comments. Okay, we have um just a discussion on climate smart community certification, this is a statewide program. Cornell Cooperative, uh, can't even speak, Cornell Cooperative Extension is applying for a grant to assist a community in obtaining their climate smart certification and has chosen Red Hook as the community they would like to work with. In order to do so, uh, attaining this certification opens up yet another door of grant funds, matching grant funds for us. And it sounds like we have a little bit of work, but not much work to do, they'll do a lot of the work for us, Cornell Cooperative, so I've included the correspondence for your consideration, and um.
So is this, it sounds like it's a grant they already have, though?
Um.
As part of the Hudson Estuary Watershed Resiliency Project?
Yeah, it's a grant that they're applying for, they're proposing.
Okay.
Yeah, they have to submit their proposal actually this week, later this week.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Um, so I would entertain a motion to, uh, sign this letter of interest to behalf of the Town of Red Hook, I so move, I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sarah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we have our um two eighty-four agreement for the expenditure of highway monies. This is something we do each and every year, it's a, for a budget amount, uh, both for general repairs, fifty thousand dollars and for two hundred and forty-nine thousand for uh permanent improvements. And we have two originals for signature, we will get more information about those roads when we have um, more information about the materials and the projects, let's go play with this one.
And then we see the results in the winter.
Right, exactly. And okay, so there's a, two, two eighty-four, um, and I so move, uh, to approve the agreement.
Sure.
Thank you, Harry, is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and if you would all be kind enough to, uh, sign while we're here. And we can leave this with our Highway Superintendent Theresa.
It goes to Sue.
Goes to me.
Yeah, goes to Sue, alright, thought you would wanna at least make copies of it, alright?
When it comes.
Yeah, I'll make it for Theresa.
Okay, so correspondence as well. We've got some correspondence.
Do you have that, the resolution, the resolution about the uh?
Yes, in correspondence, yeah, in correspondence, there was correspondence from Sina Hudson.
Tankers.
They would like us um to pass another resolution now that there is additional work being done, determinations on the tanker, tanker avoidance zones, and as you know, there was legislation passed up in Albany to give greater oversight to the DEC. And so we have a resolution that's been prepared
So moved.
By our town attorney.
Second.
It's a resolution of the Board of Trustees, um, I should really say of the Town of Red Hook in support of immediate state agency rulemaking for tanker avoidance zones, and as you know, this relates to the Hudson River and the proposal to dock forty-three barges at, and anchorage sites. And so I'll just read the end of the resolution, now therefore be resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook requests that DEC Commissioner Segos immediately advance a rulemaking process to establish tanker avoidance zones for petroleum bearing vessels, implementing the strongest possible regulations allowed under the law, and be a further resolve that the Town Board hereby authorize and direct to send a copy of this resolution to our governor, to the Commissioner of DEC, to our State Senator Serena, and our Assembly member Kevin Cahill. And I believe the word Commissioner is misspelled, uh, Chris, if we could. Okay, fix that, that's resolution number three, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and then I've also included just some.
I'm sorry.
I did.
Christine.
Me, me way down here.
Okay, we got it, you got it.
Bill seconded it.
And Bill, and Bill seconded.
Okay, very good, and I've enclosed for your review, just again, some more information about the Red Hook Church Cemetery, the grant program, the equipment we would apply for, um, and we need to apply the New York State Department of Cemeteries with um some information.
So this is information, just for clarification, I assume that has been worked up as a proposal, not a list of, of equipment they're proposing to transfer? This is new equipment that you're proposing to acquire in order to undertake maintenance, is that correct?
That's correct, it's a new, and I think we're gonna revise the list and in, in conversation with the, the department up there. They generally fund the, the bigger pieces of equipment when it comes down to things like a rake or shovel. Um, they tend not to be involved with those small items, so we may eliminate those. Uh, so we'll amend that list, but things for you to consider, if you have any recommendation votes for what you might consider adding to that list, that would be great. I don't believe I have any other correspondence, and we are at that point in time of the meeting where we will entertain any additional public comment, is there any? Alright, very good, it's nine oh five, happy new year, everybody, I hope you're staying uh safe and warm at home, and just so you know, if we have bad storms as a reminder, we do open Town Hall as a warming center like other communities, and we can also assist you with And we can also assist you with information on how to get emergency oil deliveries or natural gas or whatever means. Whatever we can do to make it easier on you. So at this time, I would make the motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, Steve, thank you very much.
See, you got to, I'm adjourned man after.